Tom, how many of us have there?
You are all here now. There is one attendee, Susan. She is for the 393. There we go. We have Leon Aubry, we have Wendy Carr. We have more people joining.
So we have Dick Fitzgerald. Yes, no?
I haven't heard his melodious voice.
Who, mine?
Oh, is that you?
This is Floyd. This is Floyd.
No, we're looking for Dick Fitzgerald.
Maybe he's in Florida.
I hope not.
I don't believe Dick is attending today.
Okay.
Hey, Peter Spring still is here and he is representing the first application. We still have three minutes.
Hey, Kathy, did you get me my phone? I think I left my phone over by the.
Okay, I have seven o'clock. Ed, if you want to open the meeting and then I will read the message.
Okay, it is the 22 June 24, 2020 Learning Board of Appeals meeting. Present this evening are myself and Stevens, Floyd Kravitz, Vice Chairman, Tom Manning, Secretary, Dick Fitzgerald.
No.
Oh, yeah, so I have four. Bill Mutter is also sitting in for Mr. Fitzgerald. So I have a call.
Okay, at the beginning of the meeting, I'm just going to read some dialogue here for the Zoom credentials here. The meeting will take place in a webinar format through Zoom. The Chair of the ZBA is Ed Stevens. The host of the webinar is the planning staff, as myself. Anybody speaking should state their names prior to speaking. Panelists in the webinar will be the ZBA members, planning staff, and any invited applicants or consultants. Panelists will be able to comment on an item when called upon by the chairman. Panelists should mute their microphones until called upon. For voting, to make a motion or second motion, ZBA members can raise a hand and be acknowledged by the host or chair. To vote on a motion, ZBA members will be called upon individually by the chair to vote. Attendees in the webinar are the public and any non-panelists. Attendees will only be able to speak when the chair opens the public hearing for comments. Attendees will be asked to raise their hand during public comment period if they want to speak at this time by using the icon to raise hand at the bottom of the screen. Attendees will be called on by the host one at a time and will be able to speak during this time. Attendees must identify themselves before speaking. Attendees can also submit any comments in writing to the planning department after the meeting for consideration on any item discussed tonight. That's the conclusion of the statement. Ed, you can take over.
Okay, we're set to roll here. We have three applications. One is the first one is a post one to July 22. Second one is ZBA 20-02. Mr. Manning, if you agree to call me.
Sure. Okay. The call of ZBA 20-0217 Bank Street, Peter J. Springsteen, applicant Troy and Julie Williams, owners variance of section 3.2-1A of the zoning regulations to reduce the north side yard setback from the required six feet to 0.5 feet, half a foot, to construct an addition to the existing single-family residence and replacement of an existing attached garage. PIN number And I think when I was going through the paperwork, we had approved the mailings on one of the earlier meetings. What was that, the 25th?
It was March 11th and we did approve the mailing zone.
Okay, so having said that, I think we're, everything seems to be in order. We're set to proceed.
Peter, before we begin, is anyone of the attendees with you? Is Wendy Carr or Troy Williams?
Troy Williams is the property owner.
Okay, I'll promote him over. Okay. Okay, you can begin.
All right, I'm going to share a document here. So to start out, the property is 17 Bank Street and I'm assuming you can all see the location map here.
Yep.
This is 17 Bank Street right here. And you can see that on the north side of the property, we're very close to that side yard setback and that's the setback in question. Please note that the setback is already six inches and we're proposing six inches in our application. So now I'm going to share the existing conditions. Okay, so I'm going to go to the site plan. Here somewhere. Okay, this drawing here, this is the existing site plan. Bank Street is over here on the right. And this structure here is an L that was added on to this house at some point in time, a long time ago, not as old as the house. The house is a historic home. We're in the historic district and we've been before the historic district to get the project approved. And as part of that approval, we got permission to remove this non-conforming structure. And we're proposing to replace that and add to it. And the reason we're replacing this structure is that it's basically falling down. It's in very poor condition. And there's really no, no way to really repair it in place. So we want to tear it down and rebuild it. And what we're proposing to do is add on to it in this direction right here. In that existing structure, there's a garage. This is it from the street view. This is a little garage piece here. And then there's like a loft here with mechanical equipment and a space in the back of the garage that's got mechanical equipment in it. I think it was probably at some point a chicken coop or something like that. It's got that feel to it. So from the north side, this is that existing structure right here. And this back corner is the corner that's six inches from the property line right now. And then from the back of the house, the grade goes uphill on this property. So you're seeing the back of the house, this being the back here in two-dimensional view right here on the back. So this is like a little mechanical loft in there. The drawing doesn't really show you this, but it is, it's leaking, water runs through it. It's some of the structure is collapsing. So it needs to be replaced in any case. So I am going to share something else with you now. So now this is the proposed set of drawings. And this being the proposed site plan. So in our proposal, we're preparing to take down this piece of the house right here, which is what we just walked through. And then rebuild that plus add on this piece of building right here. Now that six inch setback is right in the back corner here. And we're proposing to add on to this, which is skewed to the property line. So as we come towards the street, the addition gets further from the property line. So at this point here, the required setback is six feet and we're just a little over three feet right there at that new addition. And in the back here where we're adding on, we're probably two and a half feet or so at that back corner there. And then we want to go back to the six inches that we have presently in the very back. In that addition right here, you'll see there's a garage and then a mudroom in the back. This is at the lower level, which is this level in the 3D view. And then on the next floor up, this is essentially existing structure here that we're replacing. And then this piece is living addition over the garage. And then this is the roof line over the addition and partially over what's existing right now, right there. So we have our zoning chart here where we're seeking the variance to reduce the side yard setback to six inches. And you'll see also that the existing setback on that side yard is six inches. The view from the north is, this is the new structure on the north side. From the street, this is the view of the new structure. And then from the backyard, this is the new structure here. So I'm going to read you our hardship. So the pre-existing non-conforming location of the structure limits the location of an otherwise conforming proposed addition. A portion of the existing structure, a mechanical room and garage, require substantial structural repairs. And the proposed living area addition integrates with the replacement structure in a less non-conforming setback. In addition, the sloping land and the historic status of the building preclude other conforming locations for the proposed additions. The historic district commission has approved the proposed addition. The placement of detached garage is not permitted within 40 feet of the front yard property line. In addition, on the front or left side of the building would obscure the predominant historic facades of the existing building. A unique feature of the subject parcel is that the non-conforming structure location sets adjacent to a much larger parcel than the normal for the neighborhood. The structure on this adjacent parcel is at least 40 feet from the property line, leaving much more than the required combined side yard setbacks of 12 feet. There is adequate conforming space in the rear and side yards of this structure for substantial future additions. And the owner of this property has been approached with the proposed plan and offered no objections at the time that I wrote this. The hardship is not self-created nor is it related to monetary savings or gain. Essentially, that's my presentation. Happy to take your questions.
Okay, this will do this one at a time. Bill Mutter, do you have any questions for Mr. Springsteen?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions.
I'm sorry?
No, Mr. Chairman, I do not have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manning?
A couple of questions. I guess one of them is, do you have a rough idea when the chicken coop or when that was built or came into being? Is there any documentation? I'm assuming it was prior to zoning regulations coming into effect. I guess I'm looking to see if you have any.
It's got, it's got the look that it's been there for at least 60 to 80 years, but I don't know when it was built. Tom, the owner, might.
Yeah.
Troy.
I have, really, and my guess is.
Gentlemen, let me interrupt real quick, just because this is Zoom. Please identify yourself by name each time before you speak. Thank you.
My name's Troy Williams. I'm the owner of the current property. My, I don't really know how old it is. I had never considered it was a chicken coop. It's a shed to me and a garage below it. And my guess is it's over 100 years old. From, from looking at the, the structure, the foundation of the structure is field stone that was unmortared. And I doubt that that was put in place in the last 100 years. When you stand in it today, you can see daylight through the foundation. And it leaks. And it leaks at the top as well. And so when I've had contractors come and look at it, they have universally told me there's, there's no way to repair the structure on that foundation as it is today. It needs to be replaced.
Okay, this is Tom Manning. Thank you.
Anything else, Tom?
Not at this point. Let me ask one other question. I think I know the answer to this, but this is to Peter. Essentially, there's, there's no, you're not going any closer. You're skipping, essentially the footprint as it exists is six inches or whatever. And you're not encroaching any further or essentially just trying to put back part of the new building in the old footprint.
Peter Springsteen answering. We're not getting any closer to the property line than the present building already is.
Yeah.
Where we're expanding the footprint, we're getting further away from the property line than that six inches. The addition part of this is at least two and a half feet and then it goes to three feet from the property line versus the six inches that exists.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Was that done?
Yes.
Floyd Kravitz, you have any questions?
This is Floyd Kravitz. I have no questions at this time.
Okay. Is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak in favor of the board's bargaining experience?
If anybody is there, you can raise your hand via the Zoom app. We'll do that. That's fine.
I don't know if you can see me, but I can't find the thing on my plane. Sorry.
Okay, we just identified Charles Perini to speak, so we'll let him speak first, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm speaking in favor of this. We own the property at 168 High Street and our back lot is contiguous with all three of those lots. Number 15, number 17, and number 19. And we've been looking at that shed for a long time. And I can vouch for the fact that it's, it's in pretty bad shape and should be replaced. Other, and the other thing is, I think the architect should be complimented. I think this is a wonderful plan and should be a great benefit to the community. Other than that, I can just say that I hope that you guys approve this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Somebody else at their hand up, Tom?
It was Wendy Carr who spoke up. Wendy, you can speak.
I wasn't going to speak for it. Is it okay to speak against it now or is that a different time?
Ed?
Pardon me?
She was not speaking for. She's going to speak in opposition.
Is there anybody else in favor?
Peter Springsteen here. We received, or the town received two letters in favor of the application. And I could read them or you can read them into the record either way.
Yeah, I'll read them. Oh, sorry, Tom. I will read those after we get through the live people here.
Okay.
Michael Hoffenberger had his hand up. Michael, do you have anything?
He looks like he's still muted.
He is still muting. The app has asked to unmute and it's not unmuting. Why don't we skip on to Wendy and just, I know she wants to speak, so let's, let's hear from Wendy.
Okay, this is Wendy Carr. I own the 19 Bank Street. For some reason, I can't see myself. Do you see me or is that, I'm like completely new at this? So I don't know if that matters, if you need the face or not.
We can hear you and you're identified, so you can go ahead.
Okay, okay. So I'm going to, I wanted, as an abutter of the property, I wanted to object to the variance. And I know that we, you had spoken earlier about the notices being in order and I, you know, I'm not familiar with Connecticut notification. And I did receive the original notice, but I didn't receive any notice of the continuance of that meeting. So I didn't know if that was necessary. You know, I just stayed on top of it, calling the town hall, etc. So I'm not sure if that's even necessary, but I wanted to note it because I didn't receive any notice for this meeting.
No, there wouldn't have been new notice. Everything was in order and.
You just follow it. Okay, I just did. I wasn't sure. And then I know that they keep referring to the existing structure as a garage and I think you went over the dimensions now. I didn't have those dimensions in the plan that was received to me because it is a shed. And I think the scope of the project is a lot different from replacing or, you know, it doesn't have to be replaced. The shed can also be removed. So it's such a hardship. It's not livable space now. It doesn't have garage doors. A car cannot fit inside of it. It's two sheds.
That's true. Not true. A car does fit inside of it.
So the.
Cars pay every day.
The scope of the, the project, the size with the three stories is, you know, it's a very different size. The addition versus what's existing, because as you were speaking, the implication was basically what's there. It just isn't what's there. So the whole variance is for like a six inches off of my property line where, you know, yes, that back part is six inches. But again, the scope of this project is a lot bigger. And so that lends the idea of how in the world is this going to be constructed, maintained, you know, accessed? You know, being so close to my property line without being on my property. And it just defies common sense to me that this could even be constructed, maintained, or accessed without being on my property. Even if part of it right now, this little shed is six inches, we've already had an issue where I've let the property owner access my backyard so they could rebuild their patio in their backyard because there's no way to access their backyard without my backyard. And you know, and even that really didn't go well for me because it was supposed to be a couple of days and a month went by and I had to contact the property owner to please clean it up, get your stuff off my yard. So nobody seems to be caring at 17 Bank Street about the, you know, how this is going to affect my property. Because building this structure, six inches, one and a half feet, you know, off of it is definitely going to be, have an effect on my property because I do not see how this is going to happen without being on my property. Um, what else do I have? The hardship, a financial hardship, and any way you cut it, this is a financial hardship. In my opinion, is not a legitimate hardship under the law. This, this structure, yes, it might be leaking. Yes, it might be a very big eyesore, but it can be removed. It's not livable space. And to create two little sheds and make it into three stories of livable space is a completely different scope. When, you know, yeah, if it's six feet off my property line without, you know, in the variance, and that's one thing, but to go six inches and then go to one and a half feet to two feet, the whole thing is still a variance. I mean, right now it's six inches and maybe a foot of space. But you know, with this new project, it's the entire, you know, the majority of my property line. So it's a completely different scope of variance. And I don't see how, I think the hardship falls on me because it's going to be on my property. And let me see what else I have to say about this. Oh, and even the tree, the tree removal up front, there's a huge tree. When you, you know, when you put that, I don't have any, necessarily any problem with removing the tree because I feel like it's a huge tree with all the storms that probably will fall on someone's house, mainly theirs. But I think even removing that tree is going to fall on my property. You know, again, it's my property that's being affected. So I think all these things have to be taken into consideration when you make your decision because as you can see, I'm definitely objecting to this variance. I, if it's such a problem, they can remove their sheds and then not have any more problem. And then they have a nice pathway, a nice five-foot pathway or whatever, six-foot pathway to their backyard where they can maintain their property on their property and not have to continually use mine.
Good. Anything further, Wendy?
No, I think I sort of hammered it all out, but how many questions for me? And I have pictures, you know, I also have pictures of the property, but he drew the picture, you know, he drew the drawing, but when you see an actual picture of it, it does give a different scope of it. And I have some on my phone. I can hold up if that helps.
No, we can't see that. Do any board members have questions for Wendy?
I don't.
No.
Okay, hearing none?
I would like to send out to have Peter respond to her concerns.
Okay, Peter Springsteen. One thing that Wendy doesn't seem to understand is that we have the right to take the structure down that's there and build it back in the same volume that's already there. I don't think we're here for variance for that because I don't think the variance is required for that. We're here to, when we replace that structure, to add on to it. And in doing that, those new structures will be further from the property line than the, any existing structure. We feel that new area that should be, we should be able to build the building there. I've built zero property lines before. We can work it from our side. We can build the wall on our side and tip it up. So if the, if the next door neighbor is concerned about our going on the property, we can, we can basically eliminate that possibility. We'll put up a temporary construction fence. And our instructions to the contractor will be that they have to work on our side of that fence. Can be done. The, Wendy also mentioned that our hardship is monitored. Wendy also mentioned that our hardship is monetary in nature. I don't think that's been mentioned at all in my hardship statement. There is no monetary hardship here for us. We, we're not claiming that at all. Our hardship has to do with the pre-existing non-conforming location of the structures. So that's my rebuttal to that. Troy, I don't know if you have any other rebuttal you want to make to that?
Thank you, Peter. Mr. Manning, do you have any questions of Peter?
No, not at this time. I think he's clarified. Yep.
Mr. Kravitz, do you have any questions of Peter?
Hi, this is Floyd Kravitz, I have no questions.
Mr. Mensah?
This is Bill Mensah. No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. I believe that we have, I'm sorry?
We still have some more people who want to speak. I know Michael Hoffenberger would like to speak. Michael, if you could unmute yourself?
Yes, hi, this is Michael Hoffenberger. I live across the street six...
Michael, you just muted yourself? Michael, Michael, you just muted yourself?
The tent, I see the man park in that tent every night. It's an obscure tree to the, when we built this house, it began the process of the whole street being renovated, including about your property with the tent. So that's my objection, and the Williams family is very, very aware of the property and take care of all the property. They sent thousands of dollars on the property. So I don't see any problems. And I want to thank you for letting me speak.
Very good. Next, we have Mitch Favreau.
I'm new. Hi, this is Mitch Favreau and Abby Van Slike. We live at number 18 Bank Street, directly across from Wendy's house and diagonal next to Michael and across from Troy. And we've seen the plans, and we know the condition of their house, especially that the old part that they want to replace. And we think the plan is an attractive improvement to the house and to the entire streetscape. You know, that each house on, we are on a very tight little street. Each house on the street has to accommodate their neighbors. We have neighbor, you know, neighboring house at number 20, right next to us, and we don't, we don't see any issue. We think this is an improvement to their property and to the whole streetscape.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak?
I believe Leanne Overy might want to speak. If Leanne, you can unmute yourself? Hello, Leanne?
Hello?
Leanne? No. Okay.
I do believe there are two letters in the file as well as comments for finding Mr. Manning?
Would you like me to read them, or this is Tom?
Yes, please.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
I got them right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the first was an email. Let me get it here. To Tom Zanarini from John Moore, subject 17 Bank Street. Hello, Thomas. My name is John C. Moore, 15 Bank Street Mystic. He leaves his telephone number. I am contacting in complete favor of the 17 Bank Street building proposal as submitted by Julie and Troy Williams. We should be pleased to have such an improvement in this physical area. Clearly, this is a win-win idea going beyond the call of duty within this district and landscape, regards, John. And this is a letter from Kathy and John Dugan, 192 High Street. It's dated March 2nd, oh, I should say that the email was sent March 6, 2020. This letter to Tom Zanarini was dated March 2nd regarding 17 Bank Street request for zoning variance. Dear Mr. Zanarini, we are neighbors to the property of 17 Bank Street and receive notice that a zoning variance for a proposed renovation with an addition is under consideration. The purpose of this letter is to let you know of our strong support for the proposed project. Julie and Troy Williams purchased the house seven years ago and have been active in the neighborhood. They have made improvements and been attentive to maintaining the house and landscaping. They have often discussed with us their wish to improve the house, to make it work better for the needs of their family. We know they will give careful consideration to the history of the neighborhood as they have developed plans. We have seen their proposed plans and believe this project would be an improvement to the neighborhood. We urge you to support this plan. It is nice to have owner-occupied properties in our neighborhood, and we feel that these improvements will ensure that 17 Bank Street remains an option for a family to live near downtown. Sincerely, Kathy and John Dugan, 192. Okay? And let's see. Do you want me to read the letter from Deb Jones?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Okay, this is to the zoning board of appeals from Deb Jones, Assistant Director of Planning and Development, dated 26 February 2020. Subject ZBA 20-02, Williams Residence Edition, 17 Bank Street, Peter J. Springsteen, applicant Troy and Julie Williams owners. At its meeting on February 25, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the referral listed above and made the following comment. Planning and zoning commission had concerns about the lack of space for maintenance between the applicant's property and the neighboring property. So that was their comment. Okay.
So we have no other working correspondence. Is there anybody there that would like to speak, either in favor or in opposition?
We already went through that.
Can I say one more thing, or is that my, the one time for me? Wendy Carr?
Ed? Would you like Wendy to speak?
Yes, Wendy, I'd like to speak, sure.
It's Wendy Carr, and I know I had already spoke, so thank you. But I just, when Peter keeps referring to the existing structure and how they already have six inches, and what they're doing, what they're doing is not the existing structure. And up front, in the front of the property, it's clear, it's an addition. So where the house sits now is not where this variance and their addition is going to sit if it gets approved. So I just want to make that clear, because he keeps referring to it as it's already existing, but it's not already existing. The entire front of that addition is not there, empty. You know, if you want to build that whole side out to the property line. So right, where the property, where it's built out now and where it will be after this is or isn't approved is two different things. And then when I had said financial hardship on the phone with Troy, he had said he can't sell the house with it like this, he needs the addition to sell the house. So that's what he said to me on the phone. So that implies financial hardship to me, which doesn't imply a hardship. So that's why I said financial hardship. So those are the two things I wanted to say in response to what he's saying, because he keeps saying it's existing. I understand what's existing, and I understand what they want to put in addition, and it's a completely different scope from what the existing, what is existing there. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. Peter, would you like to respond?
Yes, Peter Springsteen. Wendy is correct, there's a structure there that's existing, and we're going to rebuild that structure. And in addition to that, we are proposing an addition, and that's clearly outlined on the drawings where that is. The addition portion of this will be further from the property line than the existing structure that we're going to replace. So I'm in agreement, it's not, it's not that the whole thing is new, it's a portion that is new. A portion that's new is...
Closer than what is there, the addition will be closer than the existing house.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mrs. Carr, could you wait a minute?
So the portion that we're adding on is less non-conforming than what's there right now.
Okay.
This is... I would just say, to make it clear, there's two structures, there's a garage, and above that, there's a shed, which was the shed that was referred to as a chicken coop. The garage is usable as a garage today. It does leak, any rainstorm, there's puddles of water in it. And the shed above it, partially above it and behind it, is also falling down, to be repaired. Those have to come down, you know, in my conversations, we've had multiple conversations, I think we've shared, I've shared, and I'm happy to go through it, the transcript of the text messages between myself and Wendy Carr that were sent to the board in trying to come to a way in which we could either buy a strip of land or another, this is a bond here. And, you know, I have no interest in selling the property, we want to stay here for a long time to come. My point is, there is no way, you know, I think with that piece of the house falling down, a viable situation, and no buyer would seriously consider the house without seeing that removed or fixed or replaced, was my comment, or not that we're, so, we're looking to make the house more usable for us, and have a garage that works better and is waterproof. And so I'm happy to go through all of the things that, all the conversations that I've had with Wendy to try to come to some resolution here. As you know, we, we had this on the docket for March 8, and I learned that Wendy was going to oppose it the night before. Prior to that, I had heard from her on multiple occasions that she wouldn't oppose it. In fact, she asked me at one point if I needed her to write a letter in favor of it. So it was a bit of a surprise that she was going to oppose it. Disappointed that we haven't, over the past couple months, been able to come to a resolution. But, you know, the other point I would make is she does not live there. She bought the property a couple years ago, I think for $115,000, and did a massive renovation there, which was great, good for the community, good for the area, but it's one of the only owner-occupied houses in our immediate vicinity. The only non-owner-occupied house in our immediate upper part of the street.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any of the board members, let me go one by one, if they have any questions for either Peter or from Mr. Williams. I'll start with you, Mr. Manning.
I have no more questions. I think the presentation has been explained on both sides, so I'm satisfied I can make a decision.
Thank you. Mr. Mensah?
This is Bill Mensah. I agree with Mr. Manning that the presentation on both sides has been complete, and I'm satisfied that I can move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kravitz?
I don't have any questions right now, this is Floyd Kravitz.
Okay. Just anybody having final comments before we close this public hearing? During that, the public hearing is closed at 7:42. And we are set to move on to the next one, ZBA 20-05.
Give me just a second to get my paperwork.
Let me, give me one second, I am going to switch around the attendees and... Okay. Susan, she is the applicant for the next application.
Okay, this is reading the call of the next public hearing. ZBA 20-05, 393 Gold Star Highway. Susan, how do you pronounce it, Susan?
Masiyoni.
Masiyoni. See, I wasn't going to take that on without...
You got it.
Making sure I didn't insult anybody. Applicant, AM Gold Star LLC owner, variance of section 8.4-7A, to reduce the front yard setback from the required 10 feet to zero feet to construct a freestanding sign for commercial business. And I'm going to turn it over to Tom Zanarini to discuss why the conventional mailings that we normally send out aren't the case in this situation.
Right. So, the governor passed an executive order which supplemented mailings to neighbors for public hearings to allow a sign posted at a visible spot on the property. So this applicant has complied with that, was posted in a timely fashion, meets the requirements of the executive order, so she meets the notice requirements for this application.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Masiyoni, would you give your presentation, please?
Absolutely. This is Susan Masiyoni, I'm here with my business partner, James Austin, we're the members of AM Gold Star, and we recently purchased the property at 393 Gold Star Highway, where we have moved our accounting office to last month. And our property has got about 32 feet of state property at the front, actually, I don't, you might have to walk me through the screen share if you want, oh, here we go, I got it, one second. Let me just pull this up. Here we are. Okay. Can you see that?
Yes.
I can.
Clearly, okay. So this is our building right here. This gray line is where our property begins, and this is the front of the property, so all this...
Susan, sorry, I'm just going to interrupt real quick, because Floyd is on the telephone. So Floyd, in the packet, we're looking at the site plan of 393 Gold Star Highway that shows on the corner, and it has a note from me that says minimum 10-foot setback.
I have that.
Thank you.
Okay. So that, you can see from the front of the building, there's a gray area with the sidewalk, and we actually have stairs that come, you know, right down the front that are in this area right here. So our concern is that when traffic is traveling from the Mystic direction towards Groton, if we are to put our sign 10 feet back from this gray line, it's going to be, really, you can't see it through the stairs and safely get your blinker turned on to get into our driveway. We've already had people slamming on the brakes out in front of our office in the last couple weeks, trying to make that turn. So we're asking to move it just up, I think there's 13... It's, I think there's 13 feet from the front corner of our building to our property line. So obviously putting it back 10 feet puts it pretty much almost behind our building. So we're trying to just move it over right to where the state property begins, which my understanding is a pretty common variance in, on 184. So that traffic can safely turn their blinker on and get into our driveway without any, any issues. Have anything to add?
No, I think we just feel that the safety of our clients is our paramount concern and we, we didn't hire architects or anybody to draw plans, but we do feel that it's imperative that the sooner traffic can see our sign, the more time they'll have to hit their blinker and the less chance there is of a traffic problem out on 184. Especially coming from the one direction where they're turning left into our parking lot. And that's, that's our concern is that if we put it using the 10 feet setback, the sign will not be visible until you're just about on our driveway. And, and if we can move it up front to where the property line is, we think it gives a better line of sight to the traffic coming from Mystic direction to the Groton direction.
There would still be approximately 30 feet between the sign and the street. So if that, if that matters at all. Our hardship is obviously the state property and the location of the building and our sign being, you know, there's 13 feet there and our sign is about five feet wide and our stairs are about seven and a half feet wide. We really have limited options, if any.
Okay.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Mensah.
This is Bill Mensah. No, I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman. It's all very straightforward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kravitz.
This is Floyd Kravitz. How big is that sign?
It is.
Mr. Manning.
Floyd asked a question there and Susan's getting answered.
Uh, 60, 72. It's six feet wide.
Six feet wide?
Yep.
Okay.
And, yeah, six feet wide, 17 inches.
For the record, they did apply for a building permit. So the, it does meet the zoning requirements and building requirements. Just not the setback.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Floyd?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, Tom?
No, I, I think I, I've read through the whole file and I traversed that stretch of the road down near that end of 184 and it is a very, you gotta be alert all the time. This is a rational, common sense approach. So I'm, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one question. The post sign, a monument sign, that means one on top of the other, I'm assuming.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
A monument sign and often, to end you with the term, does it mean one sign over the other?
Yeah, there's just.
Shows two panels.
There's two panels.
Okay.
An advertising panel and then our firm panel, so.
Okay, there's always been a sign out front there for decades. Will it be any closer than the sign that used to be there?
A little bit closer than the sign that used to be there, yes.
Closer to the road?
Correct.
Why would you be moving it if the sign was there for, I don't know, at least 25 years? It seemed to work for the tenants there. Why do you want?
The sign that was there, if you were coming from Mystic, you're, you're looking through the stairway that comes from our front entrance way, looking at the sign almost through the stairway. And so, yeah, you can see it, but it's not clear. And like I said, we've, we've been in the building a month and we've already had multiple horns that we hear people laying on the horn because they put their blinker on too late trying to turn into our driveway because by the time they get to the sign and see it through the stairway, they're already at the building. So.
This is Tom Zanarini on a jump in. Susan, if I recall correctly, the front stairs had to be rebuilt. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Because of the condition? So there is a reason why the.
The whole building had a, was in disrepair. So, yeah.
I have nothing else. At this point, is there anybody here to speak in favor of the board burning experience?
Any of the attendees would like to raise their hand. LeAnn O'Bri was, is the only one that might. There we go. Yes. Okay, LeAnn?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, LeAnn.
Yeah.
Hi, guys. I was involved in the sale of the property and I, I, I want you to know that what they've done to that property is just magnificent. It's such an improvement for Groton. And had they left the existing sign, it still wouldn't have worked because of the changes that they had to make in order to improve the front. So they've worked very hard and I want to welcome them as a new business to Groton. And hopefully you'll be able to approve this sign for them so that they can move on and, and enjoy being part of our town. Hey, Ed?
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak? Do we have any correspondents? I don't believe, I believe we have a memo from the.
I've got a memo here from Deb Jones to the zoning board of appeals dated 24 June 2020. Subjects ZB A 20-05, AM Gold Star Highway sign, 393 Gold Star Highway, Susan Masiyoni, applicant, AM Gold Star LLC owner. At its meeting on June 23rd, 2020, the planning and zoning commission reviewed the referral listed above and made the following comments. They had no comment. That's the only thing I think, Tom, that's in the file.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I see LeAnn's hands still up?
Uh, let's see.
Wouldn't surprise me.
I think she hit it by accident.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah.
Do any board members have any questions? They have it, Hans, Bill?
This is Bill Mensah. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Floyd has already asked his question. Tom?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. I have nothing else. Does anybody have anything else? During that, we will close this public hearing at, well, let's see, 7:54. Oh, have we lost somebody?
No, I think we're okay.
Oh, okay. So we're set to go back into the discussion. We'll go back to the first case, 17 Bank Street. And we'll start off with Mr. Mensah.
This is Bill Mensah. We have a pre-existing non-conforming building, very located very close to the side yard border. I understand that a pre-existing non-conforming and I'm, I'm also thinking that the applicant is not increasing the non-formity. There were questions raised about the height of the building. We're not here to judge on the height of the building, but whether the footprint can go in place. I, I, I believe that the applicant is dealing with the condition that I just stated, pre-existing non-formity. I would support the application as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Kravitz.
Yes, this is Floyd Kravitz. I, I think that, Dan, you can always build something right next to a property line. And Mr. Springsteen said that you put a fence up and you work around it. It's just a little tougher, but you can do it. So I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Manning.
Now, the, the only comment, and I, I understand the feelings of the butler who is not happy with what, or spoke out against the plan. But I, I can tell you that as a former property owner on Bank Street, number eight Bank Street, and, and I was not, we, I'd never lived there. And this was in the 80s. It was a rental. I, I have to commend the applicant in this case for doing what you want to do and that's improve your property. And if you can do it within the confines of the regulations. And I, I have to give him a compliment, another compliment in the sense that he did reach out to the budding neighbor and made an attempt to mitigate the, the zoning issue relative to the side yard setback. So, I mean, to his credit, he did make an attempt. And so I, I think that that is hearing both pro and con, I, I'm in support of the.
Thank you, Tom. I had a concern, but I think Peter Springsteen addressed it and that was a main part of the construction having to take place on the butler's property line. And he indicated that it could be done without doing that. So that's, I feel comfortable with that. So at this point, we're in time for motion. I'll ask Mr. Spencer, Mr. Mensah, if he would like to make a motion. Sorry.
This is Bill Mensah. I make a motion that we have the various presented.
Thank you. Mr. Kravitz, just a second there.
Yeah, I'll second it. I support it.
Thank you. Okay. So the motion is made to approve the variance as requested. I'll do the singularity rather than colloquially. Mr. Manning?
I'm in favor of it. Yes, my vote is yes to approve it.
Mr. Mensah. I read your lips. Your mic was off, but I read your lips. Mr. Kravitz?
Yes, this is Floyd Kravitz. I support it.
Okay. And it's Devon. I also support it. So in that case, the variance is granted unanimously. Okay. I guess we're set to move on to the next one. Typically, at this point in time, Mr. Manning would be pretty mid-decision and signing it, but how we're working this, Tom?
It's, the motion's been made and carried and we'll take care of it from there.
So it'd be taken care of by itself?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks. We'll move right along to 393 Gold Star Highway. Comments? Mr. Mensah.
This is Bill Mensah. We know that the 84 is got a very wide right of way. And cited a number of safety concerns. And a six-foot wide sign is not unreasonable for that structure. And that's borne out by planning, zoning official saying that it meets requirements. And therefore, a six-foot wide sign right at the line means that there's only a four-foot gap between the building and, and the sign. I, I think it's perfectly reasonable and I support the application as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Kravitz?
Yeah, this is Floyd Kravitz. I support the move, move in the sign. I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Manning?
I'm in favor of it. I, I think it's a reasonable request and safety on that road. I'm adamantly supportive of anything that can help reduce any potential accidents. And I feel this would.
Thank you. I took a ride by the site this afternoon and everything on 84 is such a spot. So anything that can improve visibility if they were made to meet the setback, the sign would be worthless. So I would also be in favor. So at this point, Mr. Kravitz, would you please make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we support for the sign.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mensah?
This is Bill Mensah. I second that motion.
Okay, thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. I'll call for a vote. Mr. Kravitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mensah?
Bill Mensah, yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes, Mr. Manning.
Thank you. Ed Stevens also in favor. The variance is granted unanimously. So now that Tom doesn't have to do any paperwork, which usually takes him forever, we can move right along.
Thanks, Ed.
We can move along. I would ask this to Zanarini, if there's any correspondence.
There is no correspondence.
Thank you. Approving of minutes, March 11th, the first.
I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt Ed one second, just for the attendee Susan, Peter, Troy. Your applications have been approved. You don't have to stick around. I'm sure you have better things to do than, listen, let's go through minutes from. Okay, Ed, go ahead.
Okay. Let's see, minutes of March 11th, they were in your package. Mr. Mensah, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion that, this, this is Bill Mensah. I make a motion that we accept and approve the man's as presented.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kravitz, would you like to second that?
I second it.
Thank you. We'll vote now. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Kravitz?
Yes.
Mr. Mensah?
Bill Mensah, yes.
And I am voting yes. Minutes of March are accepted. Move on to March 25th. And I could just make, just to make a comment that the members present at that meeting, Mr. Stevens, myself, Mr. Rosado and Mr. Manning, yet there was a clerical error on the vote for to approve this first certificate application to show Mr. Mensah is voting yes, but he was not present. So that should be stricken. And then also on the second part of adjournment, Mr. Mensah also voted, but he was not there.
That's incorrect. Bill came in late to the meeting, so he was in attendance with those two.
For all of these?
Yes.
Okay. Then, then maybe it should be reflected in the members present.
It was.
I think, I think Mr. Kravitz was it too.
Correct. Floyd wasn't there, but Bill came in via Zoom for the second and third applications.
Okay.
Yeah.
He should be.
Yep.
Tom mentioned it in the minutes someplace that he came in at 7:16. I remember seeing that.
Yeah. Kara mentioned in the minutes. She does the minutes.
Okay.
Ed, you're right, though. Up at the roll call, I think it says that he's absent. And you're right, I should put him as he came in, in parentheses, what time he came in, rather than absent.
There's a note, it's Mensah arrives at 7:16 PM remotely via Zoom.
Yeah, but up at the roll call.
Yes.
It says he's, he's absent. So Ed's right.
That works. So as amended, I'll ask for a vote. Mr. Mensah?
Make a motion.
No, we've already made, oh, no, we have not made a motion yet. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented, as corrected.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kravitz?
I don't think I was there.
He was not.
No, you were not. So I guess, Mr. Manning?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, then I'll ask for a vote. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mensah?
Bill Mensah, yes.
Myself, Ed Stevens, yes. Minutes for March 25th have been accepted. Old business, Tom?
No old business.
No old business. How about new business?
The only new business, it was not really new business, just to be sure that the 84 Route 27 is. 84 Route 27 is going to be on the July 22nd meeting. So we do not have anything on the agenda for July 15th or July 8th. I'm sorry. There's nothing on the agenda for July 8th.
Okay, so our next meeting is July 22?
Correct.
Okay. New applications?
No new applications.
Okay, and report a staff?
Nope.
Oh, okay, great. So we need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kravitz?
Yeah, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Manning, would you second that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we'll take a vote, Mr. Manning, as long as it's there.
I'll say yes, we
Okay, Mr. Mensah?
Bill Mensah, yes.
And Mr. Kravitz?
Yes.
And my vote at 7:00, yes. We now officially adjourned at 8:07.
All right.
Boy, I'll tell you, this is amazing.
Yeah.
I'm very impressed. You guys did a great job.
I had premonitions that this was going to be like the live run of All in the Family a year